Okay, I am going to, are we ready, Ms. City Clerk? Yeah, okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and would you please, Ms. Blankenship, do a roll call?
Of course, Councilmember Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass.
Here.
Mayor Wallace.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. So our only item on the agenda today is our closed session, so we're going to, it's regarding conference with legal counsel, existing legislation, and we're gonna do public comment now because we have multiple people on Zoom and multiple people in the room and we have a hard close end time of 3:00 because of another meeting. I am trying to decide whether we're gonna limit everybody's comments to two minutes or if we can be concise and say, "I agree with the previous person" and move back. So we're gonna start with three minutes. And then if it gets, starts getting long and people are going on and saying the same things, we're gonna go down to two minutes because we do have a hard end time of 3:00. So is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment on this item? And it is three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Brown, resident of the city of South Lake Tahoe. And both Dr. Whiteman and myself were the original signatories to Measure T. It doesn't take too much time to forget all the chaos, the commotion, and the inconvenience that created Measure T to begin with. So at least we forget, let's remember the past and not repeat it in the future. The amount of chaos, the amount of inconvenience to all the people that live here, the people that vote for you, they're the ones that need to be protected. And I hope, in your infinite wisdom, you protect the people that vote for you and continue with the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Borland?
Good afternoon, Council. I am Peggy Borland with the Tahoe Neighborhoods Group. We are not here today to debate the pros and cons of VHRs in residential neighborhoods. That decision to remove short-term rentals from our neighborhoods was made by the voters in 2018. Subsequently, the South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group sued the city claiming that banning VHRs in neighborhoods violated property rights and was unconstitutional. The court found those claims to be without merit. In their many legal actions against the city, the property owners group has utilized procedural tactics and the protracted nature of litigation to thwart the will of the people. In a democracy, a citizens' initiative is the purest form of legislation, and the property owners group is attempting to undermine this process through the court system. California law recognizes the citizens' initiative as direct democracy and that courts should uphold an initiative while exploring all alternatives before invalidating a law enacted by the people. The court did not follow these well-established principles, in this case ignoring only remedies, other remedies, to cure the one unconstitutional piece of Measure T. The qualified vacation rental allows a full-time Tahoe resident to rent their house out for a total of 30 days each year. The dormant commerce clause indicates that this piece of Measure T is unconstitutional and that the 30-day rental option would need to be made available only to people living in other states in order for the dormant commerce clause to be constitutional. The court, a simple remedy for that would have been just to make that available to out-of-state owners. The court also disallowed the severability clause. These two remedies were not considered, and instead, the court invalidated the entire measure where clear alternatives exist. The Tahoe Neighborhoods Group believes that an appeal is needed by the city to protect the will of the people and that there are clear grounds on which an appeal can be brought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borland. Anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Robert Henderson. I've been a resident of this community for more than 50 years. I've been a practicing lawyer in this town also for more than 50 years. And I've managed numerous cases at the appellate level and many cases at the trial court level. The, at one point, our office represented the city of South Lake Tahoe. And there's a published opinion called City of South Lake Tahoe versus Superior Court. I was the lead counsel in that case, and we successfully achieved a reversal. Why do people appeal? Most appeals are done, I think, on emotion, and that's why most appeals fail. Good appellate lawyers and smart litigants only file an appeal when they have a good, solid opinion that there's a good chance of getting a reversal. And that takes error on the part of the trial court. That has not happened here. If you read Judge Schlossberg's ruling, he didn't do that in an afternoon. That is a very carefully written opinion, and I will briefly go through what the issues were before the court. The first one was standing. That issue was pretty much a no-brainer. The law is, you only need one. There were several that clearly met the standard requirement of the plaintiff group. The second question was the dormant commerce clause. There's a rule called "law of the case." When the opinion was published by the Third District Court of Appeal two years ago, that ultimately became final because the city's effort to take it to the California Supreme Court failed. It was rejected. They wouldn't even hear the case, the California Supreme Court. So the opinion from two years ago is no longer subject to any form of attack. All we are dealing with here is the remand. And on the remand, the appellate court said, "The dormant commerce clause is unconstitutional. The locals-only exception violates that unless the city can show that there are no other non-discriminatory methods. Otherwise, Measure T is going down." So the third issue of significance is a severance position or issue. The law in that area is if, I guess my time's running out, you look at the mindset of the people. If 29 people had voted differently, the measure would have failed because there wouldn't have been enough votes. Does that mean I have to quit?
If you want to finish your thought really quickly.
Yes. I think the severance issue was correctly decided by Judge Schlossberg for the reason that you can't say with any degree of certainty, and certainly not, more likely than not, that but for the locals-only exception, you've got a, you would have got a different result. Schlossberg couldn't make that finding. It wasn't made. Therefore, all three issues failed, and the trial court affirmed.
I'm running the meeting. Mr. Robbins. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you.
Ms. Reese?
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Diane Reese, a member of the Tahoe Neighborhoods Group. This council's actions today will determine whether the city will renew confidence and trust in the voters who passed Measure T in 2018, or will the residents be pushed toward another disruptive and divisive vote in 2026. Measure T's passing was legal and part of the democratic process. It was a valid victory and became law. It was immediately contested in court by a special interest group. Measure T was a David and Goliath story from the start. Hundreds of thousands of corporate dollars poured into this community to defeat a local issue. Let's begin with Goliath. Big business interests like Expedia, special interest groups, developers, and management companies spent over a half a million dollars trying to defeat a small team, we'll call them David, of residents who spent less than $2,000 and strongly believed that the voters should decide if housing should be used as residences instead of commercial enterprises with occupancies of up to 24 individuals. Considering the inequity of corporate dollars spent trying to defeat a local issue, Measure T's passing was a huge victory for the residents. And if it had passed by only one vote, it would still be considered a valid victory under the law. In 2018, the council that supported the victory included members Wallace and Bass. They voted collectively as five to one to defend Measure T. That unanimous decision was notable because of the council's personal differences, beliefs, philosophies, and perceptions regarding vacation home rentals. It should also be acknowledged that three Eldorado Court, Trial Court judges have ruled in favor of almost all components of Measure T. One judge, Gary Schlossberg, used an obscure element of the dormant commerce clause to nullify the entirety of Measure T rather than applying the severability clause. That decision by that one judge has appeal written all over it. By appealing this ruling, you, our elected representatives, will continue to demonstrate that you intend to honor and defend the vote of the people. Hopefully, this council will put their own personal beliefs aside, like previous councils, and will fulfill the will that is obligated to the voters and defend Measure T legally to the end of this appeal session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Mr. Goodman?
Hello, Council. Jerry Goodman, a local. Zoning refers to local laws and regulations that govern how real property can and cannot be used in certain geographic areas. I'm gonna repeat that. Zoning refers to local laws and regulations that govern how real property can and cannot be used in certain geographic areas. And the primary objective of residential zoning is to segregate those uses and they're thought, that are thought to be incompatible and provide stability of property values. In other words, the primary objective of residential zoning is to segregate uses thought to be incompatible. Well, VHRs are incompatible to anyone living next to them, period. The citizens of South Lake Tahoe voted to brand them and ban them in residential areas, and this council should be obliged to allow our city attorney, who's been doing an unbelievably great job, to continue defending Measure T and appeal the inaccurate decision that was already made. I wish to remind the council, and someone else mentioned this already, that the opponents of Measure T spent over, almost a half a million dollars, and the proponents of Measure T spent 2,000. And that alone should tell you what the locals think. They were spent like 250 to one or something. If you cannot vote to appeal the latest decision, then the council should just put it back on the ballot. Excuse me. Put it back on the ballot and just, is that off now?
No, it's fine.
Okay. And delete the 30-day rule for the locals. The citizens banned them once, and they would do it again. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Ms. Underwood?
I'd like to put my glasses on. Mayor Wallace and honorable council members, my name is Lisa Underwood, and I am vice president of sales and marketing for Tahoe Keys Resort. I'm also one of the owners. It's been a long seven years. For us as a local, small business, those seven years have been filled with uncertainty. I never gave up hope that Measure T would be overturned. We were one of the largest financial supporters of the lawsuit, fueled out of our commitment to fairness and our sheer desire to survive. We are not carpetbaggers. We are not strictly greedy profiteers as we want to be painted to be. We are a local, responsible, Lake Tahoe neighbors that have been in business since 1992. That's, you know, over 30 years. As small business owners, we have felt the direct impact of the ban on VHRs, which limited our customer base and strained our resources. A healthy lodging climate has to have options. Not everyone vacations the same. We want to encourage the council to return to a balanced approach that recognizes the diverse needs of visitors and residents alike. The past seven years, although the last four specifically, have demonstrated the critical role that vacation home rentals play in supporting our local economy and providing essential accommodations for tourists. Our community relies on the influx of visitors who often choose to stay in vacation rentals, and their spending supports not only our businesses but the entire community, not just in the tourist areas, but business scattered throughout town. I'm sure if you ask some of the local restaurants in the Y and in midtown, they certainly would like to see the vacation rentals come back because they've certainly suffered. The former ordinance worked. It was not, it was just not given the chance. We encourage you to vote to reinstate the former ordinance and the permit process, giving priority to those permit holders who lost their permits due to Measure T and who still own their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Senator, anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi. My name is Valerie Miller. I, my husband's family has owned a house on Lakeview since the '30s, which he inherited. And I'm here to represent the people who did not agree with Measure T because many people speak of this Measure T as for the will of the people and the voters, but we all know that it only passed by a very, very small margin, and it's hurt more people than 45 people. What I'm here to actually ask is that you mitigate our losses, vacation home rentals, and we're not all Goliaths, that you mitigate our losses as, you know, quickly as possible. I hear a lot of talk about, oh, we're gonna sue the city or blah, blah, from people that have lost their income, et cetera, but personally, no interest in suing the city, but please, mitigate our losses. Give us back our vacation rental permit. Prioritize the people who had their permits prior and not opening it up to new people. I believe that the city should also mitigate its own losses, the amount of money that the city and time and energy that you've spent trying to fight this Measure T, when I believe, my understanding was at the beginning, the city did not support Measure T. And I do think that as a, as a manager of my own vacation rental that is right next door to us, and we had Matthew Underhill, the sheriff on the other side, who always told me that we had like the best vacation rental in Tahoe in this case because we didn't have any trouble, I read the riot act to all of our guests. I think it comes down to the management of the guests. And the one thing that I've been thinking about is how, when I filled out my new permit application the other day, it says "local contact," but I think you need to have more than that. I think the person needs to be a responsible manager and understand what it takes to manage a vacation rental and not have all those complaints. And somebody suggested to me today that if garbage is a problem, make people have bigger, more bear boxes. I mean, I don't know, I don't know all the ins and outs of all the changes in the permit that you're considering, but I am just asking that you please consider that people have lost a lot of money. I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for us, and we used to pay very large tot, you know, like 25, $30,000 tot bills. And that money is money the city isn't getting. And so I'm just here to say, please, you know, the Measure T people don't speak for we, the people, because all the people don't agree. And yeah, mostly it's, please, do it as quickly as you can to get the economy back up and running and to give us back our income. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Janvren?
Hi, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Chase Janvren, general manager of Placemate. And I'd like to comment regarding this, of course, the Measure T overturn and the implications to the lease-to-locals program. I'd like to start by expressing our gratitude for our partnership and to offering lease-to-locals housing program to our community so far. We, to date, we've unlocked 53 properties and housed 128 locals, which is pretty amazing impact to our community. And the recent changes to the incentive amounts and allowance for seasonal leases have had the immediate impact that we'd anticipated. Since making those changes, we now have eight properties currently looking for tenants and to participate in the L2L program. And please know that eight of those properties, if they all end up participating, that would likely allocate all of the remaining funds of the program. But it will be interesting to see if any of those eight that are currently signed up for the program continue to proceed if short-term renting is then allowed to be done. But I would like to point out that, you know, and some people are surprised by this, in all of the communities we work in, there's a huge percentage of VHRs. But we are not inherently against VHRs. We believe that they create jobs, they create a much-needed sustainable funding source for the jurisdiction, and we know that lease-to-locals is not a good fit for every second homeowner. Many second homeowners use their homes so often that they aren't willing to rent it long-term. But if the city is then able to collect revenue in the form of TOT from those property owners who can't sign a long-term lease, they can effectively fund the continuation of the lease-to-locals program to reach more of those homeowners who are. So regardless of the chosen path forward, we're here to help the city achieve their housing goals. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Janvren. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. Hold on one second, Mr. Asbury.
All right. Yeah, please, please come.
Good afternoon, council and staff. I am Carol Beller Downey with the Tahoe Neighborhoods Group. I read the latest ruling on the suit with the property owners group. Please vote to appeal. I have two reasons. One, the judge overlooked important data. A previous court decision found no VHRs in residential neighborhoods to be constitutional and therefore valid in Measure T. This judge found the qualified hosted rentals, the Q portion, to be unconstitutional based on the dormant commerce clause, therefore invalid in Measure T. The dormant commerce clause is questionable itself as being discriminatory and that it is not about all non-Tahoe residents but only out-of-state residents. The judge offered no remedy here, as you already heard, though it could have been easy for him to do so. The judge found the above valid and invalid portions to be unseverable, as you know. The judge claimed the vote was close enough that without Measure Q, without the Q portion, Measure T might not have passed. And as you also know, the property owners group spent $500,000 on the voters' initiative while the Tahoe Neighborhoods Group spent 2,000. In the judge's speculative math in his ruling, he neglected to consider how many more votes half a million dollars gets you versus $2,000. Also, in support of unseverability, the judge claimed the valid and invalid portions were linked by some valid language confusing the voters. Most importantly, he did not mention that the voters themselves also had the severability clause before them and knew and voted on the idea that if one part was found invalid, it could be severed and the remaining part would be left standing. Two, democracy. For the first time in six years, we have a ruling against Measure T. An appeal is the last legal move in this lawsuit for the city. It is not the time for the city council to turn your backs on the voters. It is the responsibility of the city council to support Measure T and its continued enforcement. As we all know, democracy is where government serves the people, not the other way around. A no vote is a vote against democracy itself. It tells the voters that you know better than they do and that you, government, are not going to serve the majority voter's wishes. You can be personally in favor of VHRs and still vote yes to appeal because you trust democracy and the justice system. It also, I'd also like to point out that should the city appeal and win, that same democracy allows the property owners group to do their own initiative and appeal to the voters themselves. Additionally, if by chance you secretly don't want a VHR next door to you, how can you vote for a VHR to be next door to someone else? Please vote yes and appeal this lawsuit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beller. Is there anyone else in the room? Mr. Asbury?
Good afternoon, city council and staff. My name's Eric Asbury. Thank you for this time, opportunity to speak with you today. I wanted to speak, of course, on Measure T, and I wanted to highly discourage the city council to appeal the court's decision to abolish Measure T. Just a reminder that the proponents of Measure T lied to obtain voters' signatures, and they also intimidated voters from legally voting at their legal domicile. Same strategies that were used in Measure N that was fortunately defeated. There's an argument, probably the strongest argument I see for the proponents of Measure T, in that hotels don't belong in residential neighborhoods. I agree. I agree 100%. A unit, a hotel unit with 300, a hotel with 300 units doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. But regardless of something's rented, a house, single-family dwelling, is rented for one day, one week, one month, one year, it's still considered a business. So I think there's an unreasonable attack on short-term rentals. There are respectful people and disrespectful people of all different disciplines. And so I think that the short-term renters got a bad rap. Going, you know, back in history, there was some rules that weren't enforced by the city, and I think that simple adjustment could really be phenomenal in, you know, having both parties, people that are in favor of short-term rentals and people that aren't in favor of short-term rentals. It'd be a win-win for both parties. Also, it stimulates local business within the city. I mean, there's been several discussions on that. How can we bring more and encourage more business? I don't own any second homes, but I know a lot of people that do in the community, and they've been devastated. There are certain people that wouldn't consider renting their house long-term. They want to do the short term so they can use it for their families, and I've heard over and over from landlords that rent short-term rentals and have experience renting long-term that the long-term renters are harder on their house than short-term rentals. So I don't, I'm not a teacher, but I know a lot of teachers, and they said that their class populations were dropping because some of these families had to relocate after the passing of Measure T. Let's see here, looking through my bullet points here. There are many short-term rentals that are operating illegally since the passing of Measure T. And so, you know, that's lost revenue, and I live next to seven of them in particular. I don't have a problem with any of them. So I think just proper enforcement of rules would be the solution in this case, and I'm hoping that, you know, the city council will really not appeal the court's decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Anyone else? Please come forward. One second.
Hello. My name is Alex Glavov. I'm from Tahoe Island, and I have been property owner in the city for 12 years. And I'd like to ask not to appeal the Measure T. Well, I never, myself never actually considered to be a short-term, like, property owner. And so it's not about, like, my interest to rent it out, but I would think for the benefit of the city, it's better actually to have short-term vacation rentals in the city. And one of the kind of like ideas that I have is actually, let's say we reinstate short-term rentals, and we have like big waiting list of the, for the permits. And what we can do, we can regulate the cost of the permits. So basically, we can increase the cost of the permit until we balance the waiting list. So basically, this way, we can maximize the revenue stream for the city and make sure like everybody who is, want to do this, do it in a proper way and have a high kind of like permit cost, so it's, they have something at stake. So that's one idea. The second idea is actually, I would maybe suggest to consider idea of establishing first strategic Bitcoin reserve in the city. So I think we have opportunity right now to be the first mountain city that establishes such reserve, and that would be very beneficial for the future of the city. We don't have to be like very aggressive. It can be, part of the property fee can go into this strategic Bitcoin reserve, maybe like 1%, 5%, 10%. And we can use, for example, like ETF allocation for this, so it can be very safe. for this, so it can be very safe. And I think using this actually be very, kind of like, beneficial and very good for publicity of the city because we would be, we have opportunity to be the first city that is doing this. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gliebav. Please come forward.
Hello, I'm Tom Spencer. I own a home here in South Lake Tahoe. A number of folks have already spoken. Many good thoughts about supporting VHRs. And so I try not to repeat all those, but I'll tell you one thing. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to pretend to be. I will say that I agree that times have changed here in South Lake Tahoe. Maybe 50 years ago, the idea of a multi-story hotel, 18 stories tall, appealed to most of the folks that wanted to come here and recreate or be tourists. Now, things have changed some, and a lot of folks want to come here with their families. They want to come here and have the freedom to unload all their stuff, which they can't do in a motel room on the 10th floor. They want to be able to rent a VHR and, you know, have family meals, family activities. I think that that's an important distinction in the way things were done years ago. I do believe that you shouldn't appeal, let the homeowners association appeal if they want to. You know, they're the ones that don't like the way it turned out. Let them appeal it. I do believe that there were legitimate concerns on the part of the folks who launched Measure T, and that was in the behaviors of their neighbors. And that, I think, can be taken care of if you were to examine and then reinstitute the ordinance that was in place before, and then make it stick. If you've got basically irresponsible property owners who are renting out their properties or irresponsible management companies, nail them. Nail them and make it stick. And that will take care of the behavioral issues pretty quickly. Also, if you discover that in launching the old ordinance again, that it's, needs to be changed, do some amendments to it. That's my comments, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Please come forward. And then you, Mr. Salmon. After.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Lynn Thull. I've been an owner up here for 18 years. And I'm going to be brief, but I am a local, I am a voter, and I am not a special interest. And I am appealing to you all not to appeal the decision. The decision was very clear that it was unconstitutional. That is a legal opinion. Others who are presenting legal opinions here today who are not lawyers, please don't listen to them unless you have a true legal opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Salmon?
Good afternoon. I did not plan on speaking today, but the room's fairly empty. By the way, Mark Salmon, I am a member of the South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group, and I did support the lawsuit against Measure T. The crowd seems thin. I think it's my same feelings. I didn't plan on talking because frankly, I'm exhausted with the topic. I think you guys all are. So it's nice to see that maybe we're finally just done with this. So the continuation of it with an appeal, I think would just further the drama for a long time to come. It's, we're obviously divided in this, in this town on this topic, and that's why it was such a close margin of victory. We're one of five jurisdictions around the lake that's, that had gone with the ban. Everybody else has come up with a compromise, balanced solution. I'm not saying it's working perfectly, but there is obviously a clear understanding from those other jurisdictions that to take that balanced approach, to have some considerations for sure, our locals and a peaceful existence, but also the fact that we really have a single industry in this community, and it's, it's tourist-based economy. So we gotta find some way to meet in the middle. Regardless of how much money people spend or how much the victory margin was, the bottom line is that the, this was poorly crafted, the initiative. It was clear that on its face, it was discriminatory, and it was proven to be such in the court of law. The dormant commerce clause, it's not like some little snippet, some, you know, random way that this passed through or was used to defeat this. This, there was a federal precedent set in Austin, Texas, in New Orleans, and it was very clear, to Mr. Henderson's point, like, the way that Judge Losberg crafted this response, that this would be really challenging for the city to defend. And I think it was well-written. He put a lot of time into it, and I think that Heather Stroud is the only one that could probably help you guys kind of understand the pros and cons. I don't know what the liabilities are for the city by, by pushing this and appealing, but I can tell you that there's a lot of people that feel damaged. Not just those that lost their homes, had to sell or lost income through all this, but also people that now have invested into the tourist core area and how that's going to be affected. There's damages involved. I don't know what the chances are for individual lawsuits, class action lawsuits, et cetera. I would just think you guys would tread lightly on this decision moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Salmon. Please come.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have prepared statements, so I'll try to be as concise as possible. My name is Jesse Kohler. I'm a local resident. I moved here with my wife in around 2012. We bought a small, old log cabin in 2014, both as an investment under the current laws and also as a place for our family and friends to come stay when they wanted to visit us. We invested significant time and money in this property. When the updated ordinances were initiated a few years later, we invested tens of thousands of dollars to update the property, to maintain compliance. Then Measure T was passed. We've lost tens of thousands of dollars every year and lost rents. We were unable to recoup our sunk costs in the property. I, there are many people in the city, many residents, many voters, that are in the same situation. I would like to encourage you all to not contest the ruling. Responsibly regulate vacation rentals for the good of your constituents and the city. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler. Anyone else in the room? Okay, we'll move to our Zoom platform.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open up our Zoom platform for anyone who wants to provide public comment. If you could raise your hands all at once, so we know how many people are on Zoom to provide public comment. Right now, I only see three hands raised, but I will note for the record, while people are still raising their hands, we did receive public comment, and I did distribute to Council 17 public comments online from Frye, Gilzowski, Greenlee, and Crawford, Johnson, Scott, Yonan, Betancourt, Buchanan, Chamber, Dalib, Elias, Growth, Hamilton, Ioshi, Scolera, South Tahoe Chamber, South Tahoe Association of Realtors, and Waikaser. And then I've also received one today, and put at your spots, one for Brower. Okay, so right now, we have four hands raised. First, we'll call on Dugan Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Thanks for hearing my comments today. My name's Dugan Smith. I'm a local resident and a former VHR operator. It's always surprised and disappointed me how vigorously the city defended Measure T. At the time Measure T went on the ballot, the council had just gone to great lengths with a lot of community input to enact a new VHR ordinance. This was the culmination of years of discussions and compromises. It had only been in place months, and new enforcement measures and resources had not been fully implemented. I don't believe any of the council members specifically supported Measure T. Measure T was an unbalanced draconian approach to regulating VHRs. Its supporters promised cheap homes and cheap rent. They promised locals would be able to continue renting their houses out. It passed by the thinnest of margins, and the promises never materialized. The city's reason for defending T was always given as depending the will of the people, and that's what the proponents are saying today. I want to push back on that idea. The City Council has elected to represent the will of the people, with those five members representing a spectrum of ideologies and approaches that exist within our community. Each member is most closely aligned with the portion of city residents that elected them, but they also are able to take in data, city staff information, conversations with other community members, and also the views and needs of other important stakeholders in our community, in our community that don't get a vote. At any point in time, the City Council should be our best representation of the will of the people. Measure T was completely one-sided, anti-vacation rental ordinance. Small portion of our community wanted it exactly like that. Another small portion of our community believes there should be no rules or regulations on private property, and they voted against it. But the vast majority of our community believes in common sense, fair regulations, regulations that manage the number of vacation renters, rentals, maintaining our housing stock, and minimizing any disruptions they cause, but also maximizing the benefits they bring, encouraging the high-spending, low-impact family groups to visit, paying revenue to the city, and stimulating all levels of direct and indirect jobs and businesses locally, also not penalizing people that made good-faith investments and life plans around the existing regulations. This large central group was falsely promised cheap rent and housing and the ability to rent their home and then forced to choose one way or the other. Even with all this asymmetry, Measure T was pretty much a 50-50 vote. It didn't represent the will of the people then, and it certainly doesn't now. It's time for the council to take back control of vacation rental ordinance. It was never right that a razor-thin vote should set our policy forever. The city should keep control of this ordinance and be able to tweak it for the better as new information surfaces or local conditions change. Starting point for that is already in place. Please accept the court's finding that Measure T is illegal, null, and void. Please immediately reissue permits to people who spew all in their homes and had their permits unjustly removed. And please, going forward, manage vacation rentals wisely in our town according to the will of the people, as represented by you, our City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Caleb.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the time, Council. My name is Caleb Frye. Just a few comments here. The unconstitutional clause was not severed from the measure because if that clause was not in there, the vote would have likely had a different outcome. So the whole measure was struck down. Based on this ruling, it seems the measure should have never been defended by the city, and I don't see how it possibly makes sense to continue defending it now. A significant portion of voters were duped into voting to get cheaper rent. Rent has only skyrocketed since Measure T, and I see businesses closing hand over fist in the town since T. VHRs represent a very small portion of local housing, and the data will show that most VHRs are not disruptive despite some folks suggesting otherwise. I've lived with many directly next door to me for years with not a single issue ever. The real problems for me have been nightmare long-term tenants for which there is no recourse. Any folks who genuinely are suffering from recurring disruption of a VHR means the city is not managing enforcement well, and bad actors are not being punished. The city has fumbled over this issue for years, watching our community divide and fight over it. I feel like enough is enough. The fact is, we're an international destination community with transient neighborhoods, and nearly every single business and job in this community depends on tourism. VHRs are today's way. Groups and families like to travel, and we need to be competitive. Frankly, it's a little embarrassing. Our city and community is still having these conversations and cannot figure this issue out. It may be difficult, but it's not rocket science. Stop the fighting. Do not appeal this ruling. Stop wasting more city resources. Reintroduce the ordinance. Commit to dedicated enforcement, shutting down bad and illegal actors, and monitoring data to drive program modifications as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Nicole Lad.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Council. My name's Nicole Lad. I'm a local who owns a home and votes in the city of South Lake Tahoe. I'm a small business owner whose business is linked to the health of VHRs. I am not retired, nor am I over the age of 65. I actually just gave birth to a beautiful baby boy, Barton, so I'm helping to raise the next generation here in South Lake Tahoe. I think I represent a younger, working-class group of locals who want to see a thriving economy for our children. I speak on behalf of many of my friends and colleagues when I say that this younger generation is very much against Measure T and against any sort of appeal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have Judy. Judy, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be short. I've been in South Lake Tahoe for 35 years, and I agree with the former speaker in that long-term renters can be far worse than vacation renters. And I think that we have to go back to the issue of enforcement, whether you're a long-term renter or you are a vacation renter. If you're violating basic rights of, of too much parking, too much, garbage issues, noise, and what have you, you just need to have some kind of enforcement. And quite frankly, I know it's hard to hire policemen, but I think that, you know, there should be some kind of a job classification, maybe cadets, that could run some kind of enforcement department for, for everybody. It shouldn't just be for vacation rentals. And I am not a vacation rental, and I actually don't have any vacation rentals next to my house. But I just think that I don't want to see the city spend more resources in terms of financial resources or time resources in going on and on and on about this. I think other cities, they, they face the same issues. I do spend time in Maui, and quite frankly, we have problems in Maui as well as in the Bay Area. But I think we just need to learn, learn to look towards a compromise on what will work for everybody and, and take care of South Lake Tahoe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have John Dilly. John Dilly?
Yeah, thank you, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. You guys have a lot on your plate. You, we have been dealing with this for quite some time in the city of South Lake Tahoe. And having seen this in many other spots, I, I will just challenge the entire City Council to just realize there's a balance. And there's a lot been said, and everybody has a good point, but the balance isn't the extreme of appealing Measure T. It's not. That's just going to cause a lot more problems. The balance is finding a way to have the local homeowners coincide with a tourist economy. And I challenge all of you, whatever your views are right now, to realize you guys have the power to finally, for the first time in 20 years, get this balance right. And I challenge you to do so because I know it can benefit every single group from both sides as long as you do the balance correctly. So appreciate all of you guys' hard work, as always, and continue doing so. But I believe the answer is not to appeal Measure T, but is to go forward with a structured approach that can help every single person involved. It was a 50-50 vote, and you have the power to create that balance. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. No additional public comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming and speaking. We will report out during our 5:30 meeting the results of our closed session.